It's now six thirty, I'm gonna call this meeting in the line of the city council for order, I'm gonna ask the city clerk. Have to cut to the general call.
Alright, good evening, Mia Protan Suarez.
Here.
Councilmember Kearney?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman Gorman?
Here.
Councilmember Cuevas?
Here.
Mayor Poland Miles?
Here.
All members are present.
You guys here? I guess that's what I'm missing.
You wanna hit the button?
No, I want to talk to the mic. I guess that's what I was missing. Okay, I'm gonna ask Pastor Harper Santalinas in the pledge of allegiance, excuse me, and the order of desperation. Before that, I'm gonna ask Councilman Pat Currie.
Please stand if you're wearing hats, thank you very. The flags are here or the flag behind you, whatever flag you wanna point to. Place your right hand on your heart and repeat along with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing and Matthew, you're up.
So, pray. Gracious God, we thank you for the opportunity to gather today, we thank you for the opportunity for democracy to still be present. We thank you that we have the opportunity to gather together civilly. May we continue to do so and may these meetings continue to be able to move the city forward and be able to remember that we are neighbors and may we comport ourselves accordingly. We thank you for the celebration we were preparing for next Monday for Memorial Day and we thank you for the people who have laid down their lives to serve this country so that we might be able to gather at events such as these, so that we might be able to participate in civil discourse. May we continue to do good things here in the city. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you Reverend for being here tonight. This is my public safety update. Los Angeles Sheriff's Department. Captain Calamino, give the report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, see members of the city council, members of the community. I'm Nicole Calamino, the captain of South Los Angeles Station, and I'm here tonight to present the public safety report for May seventh through May twentieth. And I will begin by discussing our notable arrests and investigations. So on May ninth at approximately twelve forty-five PM, Deputy Sanchez and Deputy Santana conducted a traffic stop near Marine Avenue and Prairie Avenue for vehicle code violations. During their investigation, they discovered the front passenger was a juvenile and a documented gang member and located a stolen firearm in his possession. The juvenile was detained for weapons-related offenses and transported to South Los Angeles Station for both. Then on May tenth at approximately eight AM, Longdale deputies responded to one hundred and sixty-fourth Street and Hawthorne Boulevard regarding a traffic collision involving a bicyclist and a vehicle. The bicyclist suffered extensive injuries and was transported to a local hospital. He was listed in critical condition but is expected to survive. The driver remained on scene and was cooperative with investigators. Traffic Detective Garcia is still examining evidence and reviewing statements. The at-fault party has not been determined at this time. Regarding our traffic-related incidents, two Office of Traffic Safety grant operations were conducted during the reporting period. Both operations focused on vehicle code violations commonly associated with traffic collisions and motorcycle safety. Deputies issued a total of forty citations for both operations. And then Motorcycle Traffic Enforcement Deputy Morales also issued approximately forty citations during the reporting period for violations such as speeding, failing to stop at a stop sign, and red light violations. And then lastly, on May seventh, the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department and Longdale residents participated in a neighborhood watch meeting at the Longdale Community Center. The meeting was well-attended and it was such a great opportunity to interact with the residents and hear their concerns. The back-and-forth dialogue was fantastic and I can't wait to expand on our collaboration. The next neighborhood watch meeting is in the planning stages and I encourage all community members to participate. This concludes my report and I would be happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Is there any questions for Captain Ford? Thank you, Captain.
Thank you.
No, we don't, I'm sorry, we don't have any. Or communications, if you wanna break up items, you can do so at that time. We'll get to the board of communications. Thank you, Captain, for that.
Okay, let's move our agenda. We've got two presentations tonight. We're actually gonna take one out of order, we're gonna move item number four. We're gonna move item number four right after item number one. So we'll go item number one and then we'll go to item number four. First item is a recognition of Longdale 2024 Outstanding Older American Presentation. Josephine Gonzalez, she's a resident here in Longdale. Unfortunately, she cannot make it tonight, but we definitely wanna mention that she is the 2024 Outstanding Older American. Josephine Gonzalez. Each year, the City of Longdale, in coordination with the Los Angeles County Commission on Older Adults and the Department of Aging and Disability, recognize older Americans for their service to the communities. This year, Josephine Gonzalez was selected as honorary to represent the City of Longdale as its Outstanding Older American. Ms. Gonzalez not even be with us here tonight, but I wanted to share a little bit about her. You may know her, the community, she's been a community for a very long time, a very important part of our community. She's been a Longdale resident for several decades. Currently, she's a senior resident that lives here in Longdale. Ms. Gonzalez was active participant in the community service program until late 2019. In 2019, she began to focus her attention more specifically on the needs of others where she resides. A resident of Los Angeles, of Longdale-based senior housing complex with fifty-two permanent residents, Ms. Gonzalez began volunteering as a South Bay co-op in Longdale. She worked at reception desks, handling custom service, and clerical tasks. And more importantly, she organized special events and activities for the residents that was lonely and did have little need of recreational programs or birthday celebrations and holiday events. Ms. Gonzalez represents the theme for the 2024 Older Americans Day Recognition Powered by Connections, by connecting those who live in the same housing complex with her to day-to-day activities that would make their lives even more enjoyable and fulfilling. Recently, she was recognized by the Los Angeles County Commission for Older Adults in an event that took place last Thursday. Please join me in the whole entire council, as well as the residents here in the City of Longdale, and give a round of applause for recognizing Josephine Gonzalez as Longdale's 2024 Outstanding Older American. Now, Ms. Gonzalez, I'm sure she's watching from home, probably from YouTube, right? Probably from YouTube. And we wanna congratulate her for being our 2024 Outstanding Older American. And we'll make sure she gets this plaque and show the plaque. You know that's for real. People say, "Ah, dude." So we'll make sure that she receive that. And our next presentation, this is exciting. We have a seventeen-year employee here in the City of Longdale who's about to retire, unfortunately for us. But grateful for him in his family. Now, before I read the official here, I wanna say that Mike Estes is our Director of Community Services. I remember when he came onboard from Lomita. And this was his first position as a Director of Community Service. And when you talk about giving people an opportunity to know that they would grow into their positions, I have to say, Mike has surpassed growing and took his position a long time ago. You talk about from our Youth Day parades to all of the programs that we have senior activities, Mike has led his staff to perfection. Mike, we wanna thank you for that and we're gonna miss you. But we know where you live. And as I always say, on the parade, this is his last parade, but we expect to see him in the parade next year. So you got my commitment that you'll be here next year. Unless you're out, you know, globe traveling. If you are globe traveling, then that's fine. But if you're in town, we invite you to be in the parade that you put together for all those years. Next year, that's the Youth Day Parade. When I said that you were youth. We'd like you to be in the parade. So tonight, we are pleased to recognize Mike Estes, Director of Community Services, as he retired after seventeen years of service to the City of Longdale. Mike began his career in the City of Lomita in nineteen eighty as a part-time recreational leader. After receiving his first full-time position in nineteen eighty-five, Mike continued in Lomita until two thousand seven, serving as a sports coordinator, assistant recreation supervisor, and recreation supervisor. In May twenty-seven, in May two thousand seven, Mike continued to further his career by accepting the position of Director of Community Service at Longdale, reporting directly to the city manager. That's not easy. I mean, you're not the only city manager.
Fire city manager.
Mike overall oversees all the experts of community development department, including all staff, the city recreation programs and facilities, including instructors and contractors, senior programs, transportation materials, city park facilities, and transit buses. And we cannot forget the city's special community events. Mike also oversaw the Park Recreation and Social Services Commission, Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, and the Youth Advisory Committee. During Mike's tenure, he has been instrumental in the success and startup of the Annual Blues Festival. How many of you guys been to the Music Festival? Alright, alright. Mike is cheating a little bit. So Mike spearheaded the Blues Music Festival since its conception and has done outstanding job. The Music Festival under Mike's leadership has grown into a well-attended and much anticipated event each year. Away. Mike also oversaw the city's special community events, including the following: Annual Youth Day Parade, Memorial Day Remembrance Ceremony, Youth in Government Halloween Event, Angel Tree Lightning. Some of the special projects that Mike has been involved in include the city's fiftieth anniversary celebration event, the planning and design of the Hurrah Hoffman Community Center, which is where we are now, the Youth Advisory Committee, the Blues Music Festival, the Youth Development Center, and Municipal Service Building, currently in the development and design stages. Mike's expertise and knowledge of grant writing procedures and reporting has been instrumental in the city's successful award of numerous grants over the years. Mike's positive attitude, professional demeanor, and his work for the communities have been a great access to the City of Longdale. Therefore, on behalf of the City of Longdale, I would like to thank Mike for answering the step up to the podium as we present him his retirement plaque and for seventeen years, a service pin complete with a diamond, of what appears to be a diamond. We are thankful for his dedication and tireless work in the community service department in the city for the past seventeen years. Please accept my congratulations to you on your retirement as we wish you all the best and a new chapter in your life. Come on up to the podium. We have video there. Oh, okay, wrong with that beam footage.
You wanna fix this thing?
Mark, put together? Oh, what's that? Oh, yeah.
That was the actual music.
Oh, oh, okay.
We wanna say a few words on behalf of Mike Estes. You know, Mike has been doing this, how long you been with this Mike? Seventeen years. And he's been putting this parade on for seventeen years. Give him a round of applause. So we wanna thank him for all his hard work and for putting this parade together. And we're gonna miss him, we're gonna look for him next year to be in the parade, right?
Looks like it's inverted, yeah.
Well, just like you stepped before, so you have to turn it a bit.
Oh, they're tripping whiteboard upside down.
It happens.
I mean, not.
Well, let's see.
Hey, I was trying to ask now. Oh, yeah, if you turn it off, turn it back on.
We wanna say a few words on behalf of Mike Estes. You know, Mike has been doing this, how long you been with this Mike? Seventeen years. And he's been putting this parade on for seventeen years. Give him a round of applause. So we wanna thank him for all his hard work and for putting this parade together. And we're gonna miss him, we're gonna look for him next year to be in the parade, right? To be in the parade. But we wanna thank you, Mike, for all your hard work, putting on this such a fabulous parade every year and for knocking my cowboy head off. Thank you very much.
I'm gonna miss you guys.
When you sign up your child for a kid in Longdale, regardless of what class it is, you're gonna get a high-quality instructor that has been screened by the city, that is insured, that is certified, that's been trained in first aid, that has a commitment to the children. Because if they're here now, that means they've been here for a while and they're good enough to work for us.
Just a fantastic community event tonight. This is my last big event in Longdale. We're planning the Memorial Day event. Right now, we just keep going and we just keep planning. But yeah, this is my last event for Longdale. I'm really gonna miss Longdale, I've loved every minute of it here. Seventeen years, that's, you know, twenty-eight percent of my life I've been here. I'll always be available, a phone call away, a text away, an email away. You know, when you spend seventeen years at someplace, it's really hard to just walk away and disappear. Have a safe trip, folks.
Now, Mike, you can join us.
Well?
Oh, Reverend, we should go out there.
Oh, you wanna? Yeah, yeah, I can do it afterwards.
No, you might just.
I just wanted to tell everybody how much I enjoyed working here for seventeen years. That's twenty-eight percent of my life. When I came from the City of Lomita, I wanted more work, I wanted more challenges, I certainly got those challenges. I had two chances to leave, I never left, I'm glad I stayed. I wasn't chasing more money, I loved the community, my service to the residents, I've always been a civil servant. What attracted me to this job in two thousand seventeen was when the city council, Reverend Hoffman, Larry Rudolph, Robert Poland Miles, Virginia Rhodes, and Jim Ramsey, put together a thirty-eight million dollar five-year capital improvement program. And look what we did with that money. We did this building here, opened in two thousand twelve, Measure A passed in two thousand eight. We got the design in place in two thousand nine, they started construction in two thousand ten. Two thousand eight, we did the community building at William Gray Park. We tore down the fifty-five-year-old shack and built a new community building there, which the community's been able to enjoy. Two thousand nine, we had Hopper Park. Hopper Park was a one-acre gravel lot owned by Caltrans. When I came here in oh-seven, actually, we gotta credit Otis Cadoza for getting that doing, but I was proud to participate in that construction of that park as well. And it just went on and on, we had the construction of the community center starting in two thousand ten. The Youth Day Parade started in two thousand eight. Then we had Hogan Park Design, which because of redevelopment, Governor Brown put redevelopment on the shelf for three years. So the money sat with the state and the money came back to us. What did we do? When the money came back to us, we closed the street to make Hogan Park what it is. Osage Avenue was closed. We have a beautiful one-point-four-acre park in Hogan Park. And just the things I was able to do here was amazing. Two thousand twelve, we opened this building here. Two thousand thirteen, Jim Osborne's brainchild was the Longdale Blues Festival. So I took that and ran with it. Ten years of success of the Longdale Blues Festival, it just went on and on and on. So that's what attracted me to this job, the city that really wants to do stuff. The other city that I worked in, it just became a repetitive job where I could do it in my sleep. So I'm just so honored to be able to work for the city council, all the way from the first city council in two thousand seven to you folks today. You folks have been so supportive of me. It's been unbelievable and there's been a lot of continuity. I mean, I had Ms. Cuevas on Parks and Recreation Committee, commissioned for two terms, for eight years. And the continuity is great, I loved working with Councilwoman Hoffman Gorman's father, he was amazing. Robert Poland Miles, he's been with me on city council ever since. You know, I project that I've done probably a hundred and eighty to two hundred events here in Longdale, consistently ten or twelve events for seventeen years. And it was a pleasure. In terms of city leadership, I think you guys are in a real good place with Sean Moore, Raylette Felton, the city council. I always enjoyed working for the city council because I knew there would never be a scandal coming out of Longdale, there would never be any embezzlement, although the city council's incredibly conservative. You guys spent your money well, you guys made sound decisions, you guys will continue to make sound decisions, and I'll support you guys till the end. If I ever see something that maybe breathes negative about you guys, I will reply and I will be on there. I really appreciate all of you, especially the newer ones. Verma Det, you've been amazing for the city council. So the city is in a great place, I just want the residents to know, I want the city council to know, how much I enjoyed working here. And it's a sad time for me. I wanted to do the alarm clock ceremony where we bring in this sledgehammer and smash the alarm clock, but I couldn't find one at the ninety-nine cent store. So I'm gonna get some sleep, I'm gonna hike, I'm gonna cycle, I'm gonna workout, I'm gonna travel, I'm gonna do all those things that I've been waiting to do for a while. But it's been a great, great seventeen years. And all the new staff that are coming in, Parant, Jared, Event Hall. I mean, I've been through a lot of people here. But it's been a pleasure to have the continuity, it's been my pleasure to work here for seventeen years. And I'd like to, Sean, do you mind if I introduce Jason? Yeah, I'd like to introduce my replacement, Mr. Jason Minter. Jason, can you stand up? I never really felt at peace with leaving Longdale until we found Jason. Welcome experience, Hawthorne, Torrance, Long Beach, Costa Mesa, now he's here in Longdale. You guys got a great replacement here. He's gonna be better than me, so no doubt about it. So, Mr. Murphy, I appreciate you, Erica, you go way back on Parks and Recreation Commission, I think you were there for two and a half terms, ten years. And the memories are mine, folks, and the new cable, folks. I mean, this city is really set up for the long run. And I'm happy to be part of it for seventeen years and I feel good about walking away. You guys keep doing your fantastic work and I love the City of Longdale, thank you.
So what we'll do, we'll present you with your pin and your plaque. And then from the Senator's office, we're gonna present you with a little certificate. So how you wanna set up? You wanna make sure your back's not turned against you? You good? Is there a direction? Okay, we got two things for you. We have a plaque, you know, you got probably a few of these. It says Director of Community Services on the occasion of your retirement, seventeen years as a year. Thank you for your seventeen years of dedication, commitment, and service to the City of Longdale community. And we wish you all the best and congratulations on your retirement. And we have for thirty-two thousand residents in the City of Longdale staff. And we made them cancer. Congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you.
And Mike, this time you can't stand on the other side and take a picture.
You gotta go one, two, three, one more.
I'm not gonna two, three, one off the hair.
All right, let me do this. Let's do this real quick. I'm gonna put this pin.
How did that work? I should've practiced that for it first.
Mike, you said I was done, one picture.
Joey Richardson from the Senator's. Yes, sir, yes, we saw. The folks at home can enjoy this moment of work.
So, how do I follow that? But I wanna congratulate you for seventeen years of service to the City of Longdale. This is from the State of California Senate on behalf of Senator Stephen Brabber, just to say, one, go to yourself. But two, I have been for all the amazing activities and the citizens of Longdale are better for the seventeen years that you've been here and the events that you spearheaded and kept going. So thank you so much for all the service, because I know it's come from your heart and I want you to enjoy your retirement and come back.
Appreciate you folks participating in all the events over the years.
Let's have a word from Councilman Pat Currie.
Mikey, I call him Mikey. When he first came to city, I was a park director, senior regulator. And so I worked under my for many years, so two thousand ten, I was elected. There were some challenging moments we went through together, but personally, you did one hell of a job. And I'm proud to call you my friend.
I'll say a few words, just, Mike, you know, when I came in, you were the director, and I really enjoyed getting to work with you, the passion that you have for your job. Every single event, I could see you out there running around, making sure things happened. And so we really appreciate you, and I'm sure that those tists between you and Pat were Pat's fault, so we won't waste them. But, uh, thank you.
I put a bird in our ears maybe next year. My grand marshal sitting right there.
Well, I said he's got the bird.
Oh, yeah? Okay. So you can't go nowhere next year, right?
Okay. Thank you for that. Before we move on, let me back up really quick for the older American, Josquin Gonzalez. I would miss to mention that she also received this beautiful certificate of recognition from Supervisor Holly Mitchell. Now, native of Una Ah, oh. And his, and his, my friend. So, supervisor of the second district, Holly Mitchell, will make sure that this is valid to see this work. All right, moving our agenda along, we're gonna back up to, um, item two, which is a presentation by the South Bay Council, South Bay City Council Government Local Travel Network. Let's have the presentation. This is Jackie Baffert, heard you.
I'm really delighted to be here, and I'm, I'm sort of delighted to be here, to, to join you to celebrate Mike's leaving, but he's also leaving the South Bay Cities. And I have to just say, he's been a really wonderful member of our Parking Recreation Committee, sharing ideas on all these great events that you have here with the rest of the cities in the South Bay. And so we're gonna miss him too. I just wanna wish him well.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you. I'm here tonight to discuss our local travel network, the South Bay's local travel network, and we're delighted that you asked us to, to come and tell you more about it. First of all, it's working very well right now in the city of El Segundo, and, um, and we are trying, we're moving out to other cities, and we'll be, we'll learn more about that. I wanted to introduce the people, our team, our South Bay Travel Network team, and that's Jake Romoff and Anne Tsai. We're gonna make the presentation. You'll have to come on up, and we'll be very glad to answer any of your questions. We're excited about this, and we think one of these by the local travel network is it's looking into the future. It's how we're gonna get around when there's even more congestion than today, and we're taking, we're trying to get to where we need to go in Longdale, so, and throughout the South Bay. So I'm gonna introduce Jake.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jake Romoff. I'm a project coordinator with the South Bay COG.
And I'm Anne Tsai, and I'm a Civic Spark fellow with the South Bay COG.
And as Jackie mentioned, we're here today to talk about the local travel network in the South Bay and hopefully coming to Longdale. So the three main things we're gonna talk about today is we're gonna give you guys an overview of the project, how it came to be, the research that went into this plan, as well as how we plan to hopefully bring it to Longdale and the steps that we take, and the next steps moving forward from this presentation, how we hope to work with you and the city staff to do road refinement and get in an application to Metro.
Okay, so a little bit of background on how we got to where we are today. So the South Bay Cities COG has been responsible for facilitating collaboration with the sixteen cities that make up our service territory. And over the past two decades, we have conducted greenhouse gas emissions inventories with you and the rest of our cities and produced climate action plans. And then as part of our land use and water action strategy, we have studied the potential for electric vehicles in the South Bay. One notable study that we did was the LOVE, or Local Used Vehicle Pilot Program. We conducted this study around 2010, 2011. What we did was that we loaned a, a local used vehicle, or a neighborhood electric vehicle, or NEV, to households that volunteered to sign up. We loaned the vehicle to them for three months at a time, and these vehicles, they're slow. They go twenty-five miles per hour maximum, and they're electric, so there's zero emission. And then we stuck a GPS on all of these vehicles, as well as a GPS on their, our regular cars. And so from that, we were able to gather a lot of trip data about where people were going in the South Bay and how far they were traveling. And so, um, from our climate action planning and this research that we did, we found that transportation is the largest source of greenhouse gas emissions in the South Bay, and many of these car trips are actually really short, so people are not traveling very far. In fact, seventy percent of car trips in the South Bay are under three miles. And then we found that local used vehicles, or NEVs, can accommodate many of those short trips.
And so these findings presented a key opportunity, and as I'm sure many of you know, electric mobility is just booming in Los Angeles, Southern California, and the South Bay, especially e-bikes here in the South Bay are becoming increasingly popular, especially with teenagers and students as a way to get to school, community centers, and their friends' house. And so one of the benefits we saw from these findings was that a local travel network could not only improve road safety, we heard just today from the police department about a collision in which a bicyclist was seriously injured, and that's something we want to see fixed, but it can also reduce congestion. So by taking cars off the road, it reduces traffic and further improves safety. It could also reduce electricity costs, and as EVs are growing popular, we all know there's gonna be a strain on the grid, so it's important to try and get as many cars off the road as possible. And therefore, by reducing cars on the road, you reduce travel costs, carbon emissions, and you get rid of that extra vehicle for the household.
So in designing this local travel network, we employed a few key strategies. First, we plan to establish safe routes for slow-speed vehicles to connect neighborhoods to other neighborhoods to destinations, and to identify protected intersections for slow-moving vehicles to cross at busy intersections, to separate our local traffic from all the through traffic that is traveling on those fast-moving streets, to expand bike lane access to all forms of micro-mobility, and to promote this concept that we call "right side you are right" in our communities.
And so here are the key network attributes and amenities that make that possible. So the first is we try to put all streets on a twenty-five mile-per-hour street with the maximum being thirty-five miles per hour. So these are streets that are already slow and are more conducive to active transportation and micro-mobility. Further, we wanna add strights or sharers to the road to communicate to drivers that they're not a priority on this road, and they do in fact share the road with other forms of transportation. Additionally, we will have rolling turtle signs, which, um, are the brand that we came up with, uh, with our consultants, and it's a way to demonstrate to the car that they are on this network and to keep an eye out, as well as a way for active mobility users to know that they are on the local travel network and where they are traveling to is on a safe and efficient route. Additionally, as we progress in this project, we wanna add micro-mobility parking and charging. So at key centers such as this center right here or City Hall, we can add parking spots for NEVs or charging stations for electric, uh, bikes or other forms of micro-mobility. And then the fifth attribute, which is incredibly important, is direction to protected intersections. The South Bay is bisected by freeways and busy thorough crews, and especially here in Longdale, where you are bisected by a highway down the middle, it's incredibly important that we give our active transportation users, and especially students, a safe way to get across those busy streets and to the destinations they're heading to.
So if we zoom in on this turtle sign, we worked with a consultant to develop the branding for the local travel network, and what they came up with was this rolling turtle. And it stood out from all of the other designs that they proposed because, um, yeah, it's just a non-traditional road signage, and it presents great opportunities for branding.
And we are wearing the pins that say "Local Travel Network" and have this turtle on it. So now we're gonna talk a little bit about the El Segundo Pilot. This came through fruition last November, and what we were able to do is work with the city to put up these local travel network signs with the turtles. And so throughout Longdale now, there are signs that look, oh, sorry, Longdale, El Segundo. There are signs that welcome drivers and active mobility users to the local travel network to let them know they're on a selection of slow-speed streets where micro-mobility and active transportation is the priority. Additionally, these were paired with wayfinding signs so that users of this network can easily find their way to key destinations around the city while staying on the network.
So, leading up to and following the ribbon cutting for El Segundo Pilot, we have launched several social media campaigns where we discuss safety for low-speed vehicles. We showcase the different modes that are available and just the benefits of, of low-speed travel. We also recently launched Turtle Talk, our monthly e-blast, where we provide project updates, and again, we offer safety tips and discuss the sorts of model work coming out in the micro-mobility market. So we're just trying to keep this, um, drumbeat going of changing the culture of mobility in the South Bay.
So this next slide displays the entire network we originally designed across the South Bay, and the key part of it is that it connects the cities to other cities. So you could, in theory, use the local travel network to get around the South Bay as a region rather than just an isolated network. And in 2024, 2025, our plans are, well, last November, we had our El Segundo Pilot Program. Redondo Beach has received a funding agreement, and Carson and La Mida have applied for their Measure M application through Metro just recently, and we hope to do the same with Longdale moving forward. And that brings us to bringing the LTN to Longdale. It's a little hard to see for the audience on this presentation, but the network's key feature is it connects to, uh, centers within the city, and, and that's in a lot of schools and arts and recreation centers, as well as crossing those busy intersections and giving safety the priority.
So we've seen a massive boom in the popularity of e-bikes and e-scooters, especially over the COVID-19 pandemic. And as these, as it becomes more popular and as e-bike incentive voucher programs roll into underserved communities in the South Bay, there are many opportunities for safety and educational programs. We've seen, for example, that many users don't understand the differences between the classifications of e-bikes and the different speeds that they go in, so it's very crucial to educate the community about what they're purchasing, what they're using. Yeah, so then on this slide, we put up a little snapshot of the Safe Routes to School Program in Longdale, and if you overlay the parts of the local travel network in purple, you can see that, um, the LTN complements the Safe Routes to School Program, and so, already in this one map alone, it, it reaches five different schools in Longdale. And so we think that this can really encourage students to use more active transportation to get to school.
And a key part of this is road refinement, and this is the next step we hope to take with you and your city staff, as we can come up with plans and consult, uh, consultants. However, you as the residents know firsthand where the ideal routes for a network would be. And for example, when we were looking at, when connecting schools, it's very important that the network connects to the entrance most of the students use. Simply passing the school doesn't do anything if you're dropping them off at the baseball field rather than the entrance. So if you guys have any insights on where you think the network would be best suited based off of the routes we proposed, we would love to hear that feedback.
And furthermore, the LTN complements Longdale's planned bike infrastructure. So on the map, so you have up there, we have the planned bike facilities for, from the 2020 general plan. You can see, overlaying on top, the LTN really integrates well with the bike infrastructure. So the LTN is essentially another way to implement your bicycle business.
Now, the implementation process, so the first thing that we would take to get the LTN to Longdale is, as we mentioned, to meet with you and your city staff to go over our proposed route refineries, to hear firsthand what you think would be the best route for the LTN to take. And in doing so, we'd also love the opportunity to meet with community groups. The more insight we get from the residents, the better we can tailor this network to your city. And then from there, we would seek acceptance of the route that we as a COG and working with you as residents have come up with. And once we have that final route, we will hopefully apply for a Measure M application through Metro, and then after that, we receive the funding agreements usually later or the following year. And at that point, we wanna get more stakeholder feedback based off the funding agreement and the routes that we've come up with. If something has changed in the time it took, we can still make edits, and we wanna work with the community as much as possible and get as much feedback as possible. And after all that, we will have a ribbon cutting and hopefully open up the LTN in Longdale. So the next steps to do this are first, as we said, some route refinement. I know I said route refinement's a lot here, but that is the most critical part because that is where the sharers on the road go and the signs on the, on the side of the street go. So the next step would be to work with city staff and develop that route, and we would welcome the opportunity to, in Carson, for example, we met with, um, the City Works Commission, I believe, uh, Public Utilities, I'm sorry, and we gained more insight. So if there's any commissions, committee committees, school boards, parents groups, anyone you think could provide valuable insight that we need to hear, we would love the opportunity to meet with them. And that feeds into stakeholder engagement. And then number three is submitting that Measure M application. So that will come after all these steps are taken, and we will make sure that the route is the best and optimal route for, uh, Longdale and that the community has had their chance to give feedback. And Erin Baum is our project manager on this, but also feel free to contact me, Jake Romoff, or Anne, and we will get back to you as soon as possible. And let us know if you have any questions or if we can send you any more information.
I wanna add one thing that I realized we really didn't say, and that is when Jake talks about a Measure M application, he's not talking about Longdale mine. He's talking about subregional mine. So we plan to use our subregional mine to pay for the network, and I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you, yes. Thank you, Ermos. Is there any questions that we can ask up here?
Thank you for the presentation, and Jackie, there was a great clarification.
Yes.
One of my questions was not, we'd have to put our measure in line unless allocated to the city, so there was great clarification, so thank you for that. Let's see if there's any, any other questions. I think I have a few observations, but any questions?
My question was gonna be the Measure M, but you already answered that. Thank you.
I, I would say that, um, just off the, my first impression is that I do like this project. Jackie knows from way back, when you had another program, it wasn't a, completely like this program, but it was a shared ride type of program, and that was kind of in its infancy state or what have you. So a lot of pushback from some cities and what have you, how that type of, um, um, car sharing, um, program, vehicle sharing program on the work, and I see that that's instituted here as well, which I think is, is an important, um, component. The thing about, you know, government, and you probably appreciate this as a council member, former council member, is as you, as you go, you learn, you know, more about how things can, can actually be beneficial to the community, and you kind of see how, as you mentioned earlier, Jake, how in this case, the e-bikes is gonna, that kind of, um, transportation is gonna continue to grow, so we have to plan for these types of, um, of programs. So just like the share ride, probably wasn't there at the time, and you could see that, you know, twenty years down, down the road, it would be beneficial. The e-bikes, um, transportation component is pretty much similar. One of the reasons why I don't have an e-bike is because I don't have confidence in the road, you know, and sharing the road and what have you, having this such a program as Local Travel Network will do it, because up until about a year ago, I could ride my bike to work. I'm not riding now because it's not an hour. I changed jobs. So, but, but I get the point, that those local seventy percent, um, um, travel, you know, is three, less than three miles. And so definitely on the weekends of working, kind of getting e-bikes, I look forward to having, um, this type of infrastructure come to Longdale. So those are my first impression. I would say, um, let's say I had another, um, that I wanted to mention, let's see what was, um, about the charging stations. I'm excited that there'll be charging stations. Now, was the charging station just for the, um, the e-vil, right? What about with the e-bikes?
Uh, that is something that we would definitely like to add, a key location. Right now, the only implemented ones are for NEVs. For example, in El Segundo, we have, uh, dedicated parking spots, um, outside of their City Hall, because they're more compact vehicles, you can actually fit them in less spot space.
But, but also that when you put in a charging station, it usually is a level two charge for a regular electric car, these, uh, vehicles from the neighborhood vehicle all the way down to the scooter are charged on level one. So if you put in charging. So if you put in charging, you need to put in the level one for this network, or level two with a level one extension, so that you can service all the E-Bs in the area.
Quick question about that.
Yes, ma'am.
The funding are still coming, is it still coming from the and your funds for if we were to put the charging stations?
We
Or how would that
Okay, well, we're constantly looking for grants. And there are things that come up to put a lot for charging stations. So we might use our funds if if we can, but it's sort of tangential to the transportation. So we might actually point your city to go help us with the grant. And and there's and there's all the different ones coming up now all the time. So it's hard to say.
And that's also another point I did want to add to that, is when it comes to running the Measure M application, that is something we understand as a city that takes time and takes some resources. And us as a COG, part of what we can offer is to do the bulk of that uh lift for you. And we would basically apply on your behalf with your guys' sign on.
So basically, you said there's no heavy yet.
Exactly, yeah.
We appreciate that.
Any other um questions?
I have confirmation.
Yes, sir.
Um, you said the twenty-five mile speed limit streets, are those residential or thoroughfare, maybe highways?
Those would be primarily residential. We go up to thirty-five miles per hour. We try and avoid that as much as we can.
And then these charging stations, I know the batteries don't last forever in those. Who's on the hook for replacement? The city or?
Well, the what we're asking, what we're suggesting with the local travel network is that people buy these vehicles as their second, third, or fourth vehicle. So they would be owned by people. And therefore, we would we would work on charging, we would also try, I know there's a new thing now, battery um swapping, if that's a good word, battery swapping. And we would try to make those kinds of programs available, but these really would be in the main personal value of the
I'm talking about the charging stations themselves. They don't last forever.
Oh.
Who's on the hook for that? And who's on the hook for the electricity that charges those places? The city?
No, I, well, you they can, you can charge the residents for the little charges that they're using. So I don't know. It depends on what kind of charging station you get. It's I can't answer.
And then I gave the city manager, deputy city manager, uh CD disc of the original South Bay Masago Plan, uh set on two thousand and ten. I don't know if you've seen that, if you have it in your archives, but our city manager, deputy city manager says, some of our streets here that you have out of line are not going to qualify. I'm telling you right now, they're too small.
That's that's what we
But if you have a chance, hope that city manager Sean Morris, get a copy of the original Masago Plan that we did with South Bay uh meat studies. Play that two thousand and ten, I believe it was.
So so that's going to speak to the uh the route refining.
Yeah, definitely have.
Discussion and input on the refining, uh, you know, company routes.
Yeah, no, and I just wanted to thank the COG for coming. I had pushed this, you know, being the rep for our city. Um, and so I'm looking forward to going this route. We have had residents that have come and asked for safer streets for bike routes. And so I think this kind of encompasses a lot more. Um, and then the other thing is, I I hope in the future, which I I think this might have been something that we were looking at, for programs where um residents can actually purchase those types of vehicles through grant funding. I'm sure that that's going to be, you know, we're on the lookout for that, that way they can actually utilize it for those that that want to. But um I I'm interested in seeing this program before. Um, I don't know if my colleagues know, but um I think this is a good So how do we, I guess this question for the city manager, how do we get this moved forward? Is it Robert suggesting a local travel network committee maybe?
No, actually, you're suggesting a local reform.
Okay.
No, but since she's part of the COG, you know, I represent her on the COG. I think it would be uh great if we formed an ad hoc committee so we can kind of flesh out some of the details, uh specifically the the route refining, refining, that's my contract, refining.
Yeah, I would volunteer.
I would.
Well, we're we're the buzzer, I fight you for it.
She's the she's the El Segundo.
Are you opting for the COG?
Yes.
But this is a comeback though, for full work, eventually, so I don't know what
And we probably can't do it tonight anyway.
You you can form a, you can form an ad hoc subcommittee tonight and let them get rolling, but anything that the the bulk council takes on, we'll come back and
Okay.
Or you think about it and do it at your next meeting if you want to do some committee that.
Okay. All right, let's give it some thought. But I want to thank you for your presentation. I'm intrigued. I want to see uh move forward to work out the details.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Now, let's have a quick question on something that no one can live without. And that's a presentation about the West Basin Municipal Water District. There are almost young public information specialists, three.
Thank you, Mayor Hallidom, and thank you, council members and city staff for allowing me to provide this very interesting update on uh this upcoming regulation. It's coming down the drinking tracks. It's just a high-level FYI, so you can prepare yourselves and the city and pass it forward on to any businesses, industrial, industrial or industrial properties within your city boundaries. Um, just to frame this, I'm sure you're all familiar with West Basin Municipal Water District. It's the local government agency that helps manage the drinking water supply in the South Bay cities. Our water resources management initiatives and priorities are really driven by our five-member board, elected city uh and elected civic uh members, much like yourselves, who are elected into their positions. And the board member who represents the residents and business voices here in Longdale is board member Donald L. Gere with Division Five. So he loves to hear any concerns, issues you have about the drinking water supply, water rates that are passed on to you by Golden State Water, anything. And he represents your voice on our board. Um, our service area is a hundred eighty-five uh miles large. We serve about a million people, providing with drinking water and coming up with alternative supplies. Make sure that there is enough drinking water in the South Bay cities. And this upcoming regulation for prohibiting the irrigation of of drinking water on decorative turf is really going to be applied to the water purveyors and retailers within our service area. The customers that West Basin Municipal Water District works with are specifically five cities who have their own water departments, three water retailers, investor-owned water companies, including Golden State Water and the Los Angeles County Water Districts. So this specific regulation is going to be impacting them. These are the uh agencies or entities that are going to have to be held accountable by the State Water Resources Control Board about the prohibition of using drinking water on these commercial, industrial, and institutional properties, not residences, not businesses themselves. So what is this regulation? Basically, and simply put, not using drinking water on decorative turf. So any green lawn that is used for recreational purposes, whether it's gatherings, playing on, walking dogs, it's fine. Any green lawns that are used for gathering, for concerts, um festivals, um picnicking on, it's fine. Those lawns that are already using recycled water, it's not drinking water, so that's still going to be allowed at court cemeteries. And the state realizes the importance of a tree canopy to reduce solar radiation. So um watering trees and other sort of perennial plants is is fine. For the decorative turf uh itself, I'm sure that we all know right now where some can be found in our local neighborhood, in the medians, between roads, um maybe out in front of some shopping center, small sections of grass that uh that look really pretty. But if they're using drinking water, that's sort of the uh impractical use of it because we never know when the next shot's going to be turn, coming around the corner. So all of us residents have been using, doing a great job the last couple of years, being watched out, conserving like crazy. Let's see, continuing to um value water conservation as a way of life. Now it's a turn for commercial, industrial, ins- institutional properties to uh do their part. Let's see, am I going backwards? Yeah, yeah, just going to be wrong with that, sorry. So within the West Basin Service Area, these orange areas show um a lot of commercial, industrial, institutional properties, or what we label CII for short. And our water purveyors, who are, we work with directly, those CII properties can reach from anywhere between fifteen to seventy-five percent, seventy-five percent of their service areas. So this regulation can have potential for a huge water savings impact. This slide is a big doozy, and all I want to say about this one is the state is currently calculating residential water use, indoor and outdoor, CII water use plus water loss and other variances in the water calculations that they're going to hold these urban water retailers or suppliers to. Again, it's going to be Golden State Water, the UK Air Water Bill's due, they are going to be impacted by these calculations. And the state is reviewing this, these calculations right now. And hopefully by the end of summer, we will have a better understanding of how the water, the urban water suppliers are going to be affected. And then it will waterfall to all of us. Are they gonna um provide some incentive for the CII properties to reduce their water use on decorative turf? Are they gonna encourage neighborhood watches? Are they include, going to increase water rates for those particular decorative lawns? We don't know right now, but we're waiting to see what will come down the line. Um, and this is the most important slide. This is the timeline that we're looking at. So for January twenty twenty-seven, uh public properties, excluding disadvantaged communities. In twenty twenty-eight, commercial properties. In twenty twenty-nine, homeowners associations and other public areas. And then in twenty thirty-one, if there is funding available, the public properties located in disadvantaged communities. And then starting in twenty twenty-thirty, there's going to be self-certification compliance that uh CII properties are going to have to report. We don't know exactly what that is, so again, we're looking forward to see how this, how the state's going to uh be requesting these from those properties. So what can CII properties do now? Start planning. That's why I thank, thank you for allowing me to come here today. Because as we know, if we're switching over uh decorative turf areas to uh California-friendly landscapes or Mediterranean landscapes, it can be, it could be with depending on the size of the property. So the more that um these entities start planning now, the more they will be successful when this regulation actually starts being enforced. So they can prioritize their location. If it's in a public area, they may have to educate the community about why their decorative turf is being pulled out. They may have to maneuver some political support too, potentially get funding, manage their own resources internally. And one of the best things they can do is learn from those entities that have already switched out their decorative thirsty turfs to alternative landscapes. So peer-to-peer mentoring is wonderful. And West Basin has some great resources available on our webpage. We do have a webpage dedicated to demonstration gardens, both schools, city halls, our own offices. Um, we've switched out to California-friendly native landscapes. So um they can go ahead and visit our webpage and see where these sites are and talk to the facilities uh staff to learn what's the best practices. There are lots of online resources available, um live virtual uh classes that staff or interested community members or business owners can participate in to get their feet wet, so to say. This Wednesday, we have our own virtual West Basin chat where staff members can actually talk to our water conservation specialists to help navigate through the turf removal rebate program, both for residents and for businesses too. There's also recordings from earlier sessions also. And then, hey, why not put money back into our pocket pockets if it's available? We have commercial grass replacement rebates right now, three dollars per foot, up to fifty thousand square feet. And then for public agencies, four dollars per square foot, up to uh two hundred thousand square feet. So uh again, a great opportunity to save money. Lots of resources are available for anybody who's interested in help switch out their thirsty properties to more Mediterranean appropriate landscapes. And great thank you to everybody, both residents and businesses within the West Basin Service Area. Because here in the South Bay, the water use continues to decrease. And last year has been a wonderful year. It's going to be the first year that we have reduced water, uh our water use to well eighty thousand eight per feet. So congratulations to us all. And this city of Longdale, you're a wonderful partner using recycled water. Many of your sites, especially here at the median strips in on Hawthorne Boulevard, use recycled water already. And anybody who wants to be more knowledgeable about how to save water, switch out thirsty lawns, we have classes. We have courses of the water recycling facility, which several of you have come out on the tour already, so it's great to see you again. Um, and lots of resources online to make this upcoming regulations as painless as possible and as financially feasible as possible too. So city staff, have my contact information, help spread the word to any business owners, institutional properties or or industrial properties that you may know of that need and need help during this transition period. With that, we have the answer. Any questions that you might have?
Thank you for that presentation, a wealth of information, a lot to digest. And let's see if there's any other questions on the council.
I do, Alvin. We met Saturday. And you know, my biggest concern is the water waste on the hybrids.
Yeah.
Why can't we watercraft those to like Hawthorne Boulevard, do the reclaiming water on our lands up there?
A- as far as the fire hydrants go, maybe it should come down to educating just the fire station itself. You have a question?
That's my question.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I guess that would be a matter of education. It seems like the fire department, what I already, what I already know when they do the flushing, um, that's what the purpose is for, but like you said, I don't see why they can't capture, you know, capture the water and use it elsewhere.
So I think part of the education is also, I talked to your council member, I'm currently does think there's a water pressure. They do put the medium, we don't, we have one had the water pressure wipe out all your landscape either, so.
Can any other questions? Okay, thank you for the presentation. Okay, we will move forward. We're we're now on item E. This is for communications. For communications, we have options given this body on items that are not going to be generated. If you'd like to do so, you may do so at this, this time. We have to line up out the door here. We use this door, sorry. All right, all right. You've been here before.
I know, I didn't follow directions.
Let's let me do the whole speech real quick in case, you know, there's folks in the audience who are not with us. Uh, when it becomes your turn, you just approach the podium. Um, if you would start with your name and about two and a half minutes, the amber light will come on and give you the signal to start running things up.
There is no amber light.
There's no amber light today.
They sing, who's speaking, so they know.
Okay, there we go. We're blessed.
And ready?
No amber light.
And go. Okay. Longdale residents, I also wanted to congratulate Mike Bestis for a wonderful job over all these years. I didn't know who he was when I first started coming to the council meetings over the July hat. And I saw him in the audience all the time, in his suit, in his laptop, always doing something, always still working, even though while he was at, you know, the council meeting. I've heard nothing but positive stuff every time he has an event. And um he brought back the B-class, I believe, after COVID. He's done quite a bit. Also, a former resident also wanted to congratulate him, Pam London, wanted to say congratulations to you on your Wanted to say congratulations to you on your time, and also I know you remember her. And um also with the sheriffs, I'd like to thank uh for having that neighborhood watch. That was uh really nice to come to, a lot of good people came out, met some new people and neighbors, so that was good also. Um also, rolling turtle thing, I really couldn't see, so I didn't really understand that. But that just kind of reminds me of when the kids walk to school today. They walk like rolling turtles, they, I don't know what it is of these kids, I don't know how they get anywhere anymore today. Also, um there was one more thing. Hmm, I got time, hang on a second. Uh thanks for calling me back. After something, um there was one more thing I wanted to say, but now I lost, I didn't write anything down. But thank you again, Mike Besties, great, enjoy returning.
Thank you. Anybody else? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you over there.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm not gonna take up too much time. Hi, thanks for having me, this is Tiana McSwain.
Yeah.
I've lived in Longdale for fifteen years of my life, I'm twenty nine now, so. A good percent of my life went to Jane Addams Middle School, I was the first class to graduate, as it was in middle school, because it used to be an elementary school previously. Um I did play for the basketball team at Jane Addams, if the yearbook still exists, I'm in there. And I also played for the City of Longdale, um youth sports, um while I was playing for Jane Addams, I was doing both. Um I I watched my brother do it, I watched my sister do it. And now I have a little girl, she's four, her name is London, and she wants to play basketball. And you know, as soon as I, as soon as she expressed interest in it, I was, I knew exactly where I was gonna say this. So I went to the Longdale website and it all said to be determined. Um I checked back like a week later, it still said to be determined, like someone's coming up, like let me call. So I called, I got ahold of Mike, and that was my first time speaking with him, and he called me back, and it was a pleasure to speak with him. He let me know that he hasn't been in youth sports in Longdale in four years, I guess since COVID, which of course that rocked and changed the world. Um so I'm just here to speak on behalf of at least my daughter and, you know, the other youths. I grew up with a lot of their kids that lived in Longdale, went to Longdale schools, they have kids now, and it would be nice. Um I don't live in Longdale currently, I live a city over in Hawthorne. But of course, like I said, my first thought was Longdale, just based off of what I've known my whole life, just feel safer. I know the facilities are nice, I know the staff's nice, and it started to be a purpose in my life, it's a good memory I cherish and I wanna share it with my daughters as well. So um hopefully, winter, summer, we get some youth sports back in Longdale, and when we do, um my daughter will be there. Um thank you for your time, I do appreciate it. If you have suggestions, Mike, thank for, um he suggested that I come and speak on behalf and um, you know, it's something I was passionate about. So I appreciate you guys and what you guys have in mind.
Thank you for coming, you were the lady.
Tiana McSwain.
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 Thanks, brother.
T I Y A N A, my last name McSwain, M C S W A I N. Thank you, it was a pleasure.
Thank you.
Did I say?
You too. Anyone else? Yes, sir, you have to behind there.
Look, my name's Paul Snyder, and I and I live one house north of the intersection of one sixty second and Formona. On on the evening of May eleventh, two thousand and four, at approximately ten forty PM, there were shots fired outside of my house, and apparently there was a second shooter just around the corner um on one sixty second, just west of Formona. Um one neighbor had had a bullet go through her bedroom window and lodge in the wall. Uh it's my understanding that the sheriff has recovered that. Um I I don't know if that's actually the case. Um a couple of days ago, I was up on my roof, um the idea being, I I have a large pine tree and and it occasionally needs a trim back. While I was up there, I saw what looked like two new grooves in my shingles. And I I took a few pictures and and I I was hoping perhaps um a sheriff could tell me if 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 these are um tracks uh from bullets. And um in in view of fact that I I believe there were two shooters. Um what one sounded like um a a large revolver, uh that's the one outside of my house. The 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 one around the corner was softer, and first I thought it was just firecrackers, but that turned out to not be the case. Anyhow, um I have pictures that I I would like to give the sheriff's department. Uh if 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 you have a way to see these now, uh prep uh from preps, we can determine um i- if bullets actually made these tracks. Uh the the information is is the same on on both mediums.
All right, you can come back to the podium for me.
Okay. Um the um I I I can give uh the uh the DVD there uh to uh to the sheriffs. Um I I I I can loan them the thumb drive, I'd I'd like to get it back. Um i- if it's useful, great.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Gary White, Longdale, it's been a while since I've been here. Welcome to Longdale, Lee. Basically what happens in our neighborhoods sometimes. Uh when I first came up here, I thought I went to a timeshare meeting or something like that. First time back for a long time. Anyhow, it's different setup. Yeah, I wonder, make a few statements about a few things. Uh the graffiti removal, I found out that, I'm not the only one who calls, so that's good. Yeah, sometimes it just disappears when I forget to make that call. Uh the freeway overpass at Hawthorne Boulevard, they say it's gonna last for quite a while. And uh I wonder if that had anything to do with the metro line or anything, or what's going on about that? And just wanted to say congratulations to all those that got awards. I remember when I when I retired, they now pay me after work.
Thank you, Mr. White. Anyone else wishing to speak to this? Okay, with that, we'll close public comments and bring up the dice for any comment by council unless here in this presence.
Um thank you, everybody, for coming out and speaking. Um I guess the sheriff department will be talking to Mr. Snyder about the the incident. Um and then, when is the project on, how long the freeway project gonna be over, do you have a date for?
It's a it's a retrofit, uh good morning, good evening, mayor, council, it's a retro retrofit project for quake. Uh it should go on for a few more months, maybe six to eight months is my understanding, if not longer. Um they're working faster, fast as they can, you know, it's a it's an inconvenience to the residents and businesses and commuters through the area. Uh but it's a mandated thing that you can get done to protect the overpass in case there's earthquakes.
Is is that on the website?
Yes, we have all the information related to the project on the city's website and the socials.
Thank you.
And it's not related to measure C, correct?
It's not related, I'm starting thinking, and there and council, it's not related to Metro's expansion, anything related to that.
Okay, I'll be more.
Well, thank you to everybody that came out to speak tonight. Again, our apologies for being over here, but we were taking care of some long overdue remodel items and things that were broken over at our city hall. So um we appreciate your patience as we spend this meeting and as well as the next one, more than likely up here in this location. Um Dina, thank you for for having all your thank yous tonight. I really appreciate the positivity you could have, and I, like you, agree. I'm excited for our next neighborhood watch meeting, and I would have liked to invited invite Mr. Snyder, but I think he just stepped out, didn't he? He's uh, oh, he is? I would like to invite him to also participate in our neighborhood watch. I think that is exactly what the purpose of it is, and for him to spread the word throughout his neighbors that we are trying to work together to get some of these things solved. Because I think that if I lived where he lived during that night, I would, it would have definitely shook me up. Gary, I, like you, think that Longdale does an incredible job at um addressing graffiti as quickly as we can. Um some of the sad and frustrating ones that I see that are there for multiple hours are only because it's a commercial piece of property and we have to get that permission from that property owner to be able to take it down. But in most instances, it does work correctly. So again, thank you all for standing by and being here at this temporary meeting spot. And um I appreciate all of you attending.
I just have one, the young lady, she played all sports a lot, don't she, left? Well, I was gonna tell her about our budget, you know, budget committee coming back to us. Hopefully, we can maybe move forward next year, if we get the hires, everybody, feet wet. And with that, pass it on to Airport Chen.
I just wanna thank everybody that came out, um passing on.
I wanna thank everyone who came out as well. Um Gary, thank you for noticing that you're not the only one who caused the graffiti on the body. Uh thank God we do have some residents that are visiting and calling the graffiti line, and our staff, they do a wonderful job with um giving graffiti moves as soon as possible. So thank you for recognizing um their efforts are there. Also, I wanted to mention also that that my daughter benefited from the uh the basketball program. She probably would say she benefited, because she didn't like playing, but we made her play, anyway. So she, so she, she, I benefit, I guess, I'm just like, from her participating in the basketball program. So I'm a big supporter, of course, of youth programs, and other programs, I'm coming back as well as soon as as possible. Um it was mentioned about the uh neighborhood watch. Uh Dana, thank you for, Dina, thank you for attending neighborhood watch, uh some meetings will continue, those neighborhood watch um meetings. And I'm gonna take care of the uh the sheriffs, I'm gonna take a look at um um the issue concerning the the shooting, right, Mr. Snyder's request. And that's all I have, I wanna thank you everyone once again. With that, we will move our agenda. We are now on the consent calendar, items five through eight. What is the reading? Pleasure to be by concerned with the set calendars. Okay, so the motions, we may provide, currently they will approve the set calendar section by Suarez. Any discussions on the motion, Dino, with the council, um those in favor of the motion? Sitting by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposition to the motion, sitting by saying aye. With the city clerk uh tabulation result.
Um, motion passing the name, so.
Okay, thank you. Do you have, when you move locations or with your script in your mind, changes everything, right? Okay, with that, we have adopted the consent calendar. Item nine is a public hearing, it's the first reading to amend language in the Longdale Municipal Code, section twelve point three one. Let's have the staff.
Uh, good evening, mayor, good evening to the city council, thanks for talking to me today. The staff report that we have for you is the first reading to amend the language in the Longdale Municipal Code, section twelve point three one point zero one zero and twelve point three one zero one three zero. Uh this section addresses panhandling and I solicited uh unlawful solicitation within the city. In the existing Longdale Municipal Code, the law would forbid panhandling, solicitors from engaging in illicit behavior which intimidates and menaces others. And also makes it unlawful to solicit by harassing or harassing another person on public street or sidewalk or another place open to public, whether the public is privately owned. Staff and sheriffs were concerned that solicitors that are not engaging in illicit behavior um and are not even in portable tactics could arguably challenge any citations that were issued and could not be asked to leave. So we are asking, and we um uh we are aware of solicitors that do sit on free way off ramps with signs which are six month, they'll have the next day, and aggressively not simply asking for money, but we want to be able to address those concerns. Also, we are aware that there are people who do street performances in the middle of traffic that are dangerous to pedestrians, drivers, and themselves. And we want to be able to address that, even if that's not considered aggressive. So we just wanna talk from the wording in the new ordinance, uh staff is asking for you to um accept this ordinance.
Okay, any technical questions before we open a public hearing? Okay, seeing another thing before that, uh before. Okay, it is now seven to five, open public hearing. Are there any questions to provide any comments or testimony against the public hearing? Seeing none, it is now seven fifty six, public hearing should be closed, in front of the dice, any discussion on this item?
Hey, you have a question, can you go through the process of the citation? And so are they, they're issuing one, is there a monetary value at the time of the word?
The the citation started a hundred dollars per citation, two fifty for the second uh citation, and five hundred for the next. Uh that's per violation, so in code cases, if you have multiple violations of property, you could conceivably get several hundred dollars for the first violation, and then it expands every every time from there. For things like this, it's just a verbal warning, just not actually a code case, if we get a call, if there's somebody soliciting in the streets or panhandling somewhere, we're gonna make contact, advise them to leave. And if they do, then that's fine, that's all that happens, we don't, there's nothing further to done. Um but if they continue to do it, then they'll be issued a citation. But um as language currently reads, it's actually active aggressive behavior. So if someone, if we do have a resident that was sitting in front of the ATM all the time, and we had asked her to leave, myself, sheriff said ask her to leave, and and Southwest Patrol, and she's continually coming in, so, but she could argue that, and if like the argument was made, that wasn't aggressive, she was just sitting there. So that's why we wanna kind of soften the language, allow for not just aggressive behavior, but also passive solicitation. But we wouldn't begin with the citation, we'll be warning first.
So let me make sure I understand this, you said, not only would this address aggressive behavior, but passive?
Passive, so if someone is like, as I said, sitting on a freeway off ramp, which is a sign, and not necessarily asking for money, but they're getting money, do you feel sorry for them? Or in the case with the lady at the ATM, she was just sitting there, as people were taking money out, she looked very forlorn, it's happening, people were giving her money, and we knew that that's what she was doing. But we were getting complaints, that people were frightened, because they didn't know why this lady was in an ATM, they're not gonna be wrong. So that was one reason why we should soften the language, so that, because we know she was soliciting soliciting for money, even though she wasn't really speaking in any way. Um but again, so performers who are going out, they're just performing, they're juggling things in the middle of traffic, same thing, we wanna be able to say, and they're not necessarily aggressive, but it's not something that's.
So going back to the the non-aggressive lady, a person, that's just there, this would make, would prohibit?
Yes, if she's soliciting, if we see her, if we see her giving money regularly, we get saying. And that that instance has been in that already, so that's just sort of kind of typical, but in that instance.
Right, in that instance, yeah.
Yeah.
It was my understanding, uh, Mr. City Attorney, this type of activity has been adjudicated before as as our freedom of speech or whatever.
It it has, it it has, Mr. Mayor, and that's why in in subsection D six, um it's like the bottom of of page two of the ordinance, we tried to really narrowly tailor this to solve a specific issue. In D six, we talked about loitering around a business engaged in financial services in a manner that is likely to cause fear, but also uh cause a reasonable person to fear coercion into giving up property. And so we're not stopping people from passive panhandling anywhere. We're not stopping people from uh different kinds of of requests, sort of calm, as you said, um non-aggressive requests for donations. But when people are that close to an ATM or a bank, it has a different level of coercion than it does when people are, say, closer to McDonald's, for example. Um because of that specific nature of being around an ATM or a bank, a financial service, uh we believe that that can be upheld. And so that's why we narrowly tailored it to meet the objective in this case.
Okay, so in this case, a business engaging in financial service?
Yes, yes, sir.
Bank, ATM?
Some something else, uh you know, there were a a check cash. Something else, you know, if there were a check cashing type situation, any of those financial, anything where a customer would reasonably be expected to be walking out with more cash than they showed up with, or in the case of an ATM, to be walking in with a bit that's just to be deposited. Those situations, there could be more coercion if by someone remaining there for a long period of time. I think we've all been slightly nervous when somebody's standing, even if they don't talk to you, but you wonder if they're looking at your PIN number. So we're trying to avoid that without running afoul of what you said, sir, the constitutional limits on us.
Okay, very good. And my other question, you mentioned the street performers, talk to me a little bit more about that.
Well, we, we didn't have too much trouble with them. We did a recurring guy who would be coming, he'd come out in traffic and start juggling at the intersection of the head, over at Hawthorne Ward. A car had stopped and they can't, you know, sort of captive audience. He would juggle for a few seconds and then go in between traffic, trying to get funds from people for the, for juggling. So we don't want to see that, anything like that, we don't want to see people with guitars pointing at traffic. We don't really want to see anybody also just sitting with a sign in the meetings, asking, you know, just for the phrase, saying hello, or have a nice day. But we know they're actually trying to get money.
So the, the person doing the juggling, which is annoying, by the way, and that's, I guess, a growing trend, especially if you spend some time in L.A., you'll see that's a growing, a trend, I guess, starting to spread out to other communities. So I can, I can see the need for that, because to me, that's public safety. For the person asking for donations, or, you know, tips, or whatever, it's, to me, it's a public safety. I always wondered, why was that allowed, or if it was allowed, in the cities that you see the signs? My concern is with a person that has a sign, and they're passive, they're not aggressive, but they have a sign. Talk to me about that, why would we prohibit that? I thought that was what was covered in freedom of speech, because at this point, it's not aggressive, they have a sign, whatever sign they made.
Sure.
They're soliciting, basically.
Well, for, in, in the freeway example, they're, the freeway off-ramp, and that, that poses a public safety concern for their safety, because that's a heavily trafficked area with vehicles, and there's not a sign, you can sit and stand and ask for money. So for that reason, we'd want to put it into it. But secondly, all of these, like any code we have, if it's gonna be discretionary, our officers can go warn, say, you can't be here, it's not safe for you, you can't be asking for money. So we would still have discretion, even if a lot passed, if there's a lot changed, we'd still have the ability to give an discretion of whether or not they're gonna cite them or not. But we want to be able to enforce it, say, this is not allowed, it's unlawful in the community. So that's why we want to soften the language, because that is a more passive form of solicitation.
I have a question right there. My question would be, I thought when they were on like, the on-ramps and off-ramps, that we could not do anything about it because it was California Highway Patrol.
It is California Highway Patrol, but we can still advise them, just like, just like anything that's not our jurisdiction, we can still advise them. They're breaking visitor's law, or it doesn't have to be our jurisdiction necessarily. We've actually been, gotten reports of businesses on our borders that weren't actually our businesses. But they're doing something we don't allow, so we can make contact with them. And we couldn't enforce it, they refused. But in cases where they put up a sign that we didn't like, and we could improve what's facing our, our sense, we can still advise them, maybe you don't do that. Now, if they refuse, we don't know what to stand on, if it's not illegal, but don't just use anything like that. So yeah, it would be enforced by California Highway Patrol, but we wouldn't want to wait for California Highway Patrol to enforce that, when we can just take care of our way.
And, and I do want to say that, and again, to the mayor's point about the First Amendment, and many of these things having gone through the courts. So if we look at subsection D three, that, that would deal with the street performers. To the extent that they're very careful, and they go out when the, you know, the light is red, and they do a performance, and then they get back to the side of the road, they wouldn't be blocking or interfering with the safe and free passage of pedestrian or vehicle traffic. And so, we have to be careful about our enforcement, but we did want the ability to enforce if they, as the mayor said, perform and then walk a line in between lanes, because now you have traffic trying to go around that. And so, we made this as strong as we could, and then there's gonna be some working with staff to make sure that enforcement stays on the right side of the First Amendment. But we really are trying to do our best to solve those safety problems, much more the conduct than the speech, if that makes, makes sense.
So my question would be, then, say that hello sign, the person handling a hello sign. Is this a church inviting someone, or something, an organization, and with reminder, this is going on? Would we be asking them to move on, or would we be using our judgment on the fact that they weren't looking for money, they were actually doing an advertisement there? Versus somebody who would have a hello that's probably walking through cars as well, looking for that donation?
Well, again, within the interest of just discretion, if someone isn't soliciting, then someone tries to give them money, they should just on the road turn it down. So if someone's actually a part of a church group, or they're trying to make the public aware of something, and someone tries to hand them twenty bucks, just come down, they should say, hey, I'm not panhandling, I'm just having some incidents, so. So to that level, I think that would happen on the individual, just decline the money. When we have people that are there for the sake of getting money, as in the case with the ATM lady, or people off the freeway with their signs, that's what we want to put it into, we want to be able to address it right way.
Right, I'm just concerned over, like the mayor said, that freedom of speech. If somebody's standing there with a sign, for whatever reason, advertising.
They know we're here as well, and that, that's part of the reason we wanted to soften the language, because as it, we would have a tougher time enforcing tickets under the old code. So this just softens it a little bit, so that we'll have a better chance of winning in court, should they challenge it. And, and challenge is part of our ticket, they can challenge through our own appeals process as well as if they report, so.
Counsel, please.
Who's enforcing this? The Sheriff's Department, or our staff? And how are we catching them?
Well, we just get it reported to us, and we'll just go out there, make contact, and we'll say, you can't be here. And most of the time, they keep on, it doesn't get any further than that, like I said, we don't write a lot of tickets for this. But in the examples when we have had that, the lady goes to the ATM, or people with their signs, or people with, who go in and out of traffic with banners saying, oh, please give to our loved, who has money, we want to be able to address that, so that's, that's why we're doing something with the language. So, but again, we make contact, sheriffs will make contact, and also our staff at the patrol, that's what we make contact. So, three, you're going to choose.
Any other questions? Okay, what is the pleasure of this body, I contain a motion, or?
I'm in a motion for staff recognition.
Okay, so, Councilman Kirk, he has a motion that we do with staff recognition, and Councilman Suarez has a second motion. Any discussion on the motion? Anything you need to read, Mr. City Attorney?
I will read the title of the ordinance, and I'm gonna ask the city clerk, just because of our situation tonight, to do a roll call vote for you.
Okay.
So the title of the ordinance is "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Longdale, California, Amending Section twelve point three one point oh one oh Purpose, and Section twelve point three one point oh three oh Coercive Solicitation Prohibition of Title twelve Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Places of the Longdale Municipal Code to amend the language regarding coercive solicitation violations of the chapter."
Mayor Protam Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Kearney?
Yeah.
Councilmember Hoffman Gorman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cuevas?
Yes.
Mayor Pauline Miles?
Yes.
Motion passing again.
The view? Item ten is being removed from the agenda, correct? Let's start bearing. Let's have the city manager's report.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, counsel, good evening. Jason, if you could come up to the podium, please, I'd like to, Mike already introduced Jason. Today was his first day working with Mike, and I'm gonna do some training with him. Welcome, Jason, I'm just over his history. Jason brings with him twenty-three years of full-time professional experience, working in various public sectors, including, in cities, including Costa Mesa, Torrance, Long Beach, and the city of Hawthorne. He brings in a lot of experience, and with recreation parks, park management, recreation programming. Jason, he graduated with his bachelor's degree from Cal State Long Beach, and he has a master's degree in public administration from Cal State University of Damascus. He is a dedicated public official, and passionate about recreation and community services, and we welcome him tonight. Thank you.
Welcome, welcome aboard.
Jason, you want to say a few words?
Yeah, thank you, Sean, for, well, one, for offering me the job and going through that whole thing, but for the introduction. It's been great getting to know Sean, we're about as well, and, you know, I spent the day with Mike, and, you know, he made a comment earlier about he was getting sick of doing things in his old job that he would do in his sleep. What I realized he meant by that was, now he doesn't sleep, because he is so busy all the time. But I don't know, I learned a lot from him today, I hope he gives me a few more hours over the next, you know, few days, because I'm sure I'm gonna have a lot of questions when I try to fall asleep tonight. But I'm very excited to be back in the South Bay. I do live, you know, in the adjacent city of Torrance, and I spend a lot of time, you know, in, in the South Bay area, and now I get to focus on the heart of the South Bay, so I'm very excited about that. You know, I've learned a lot so far, visited the parks with Mike today, looking at some of our new projects, like the Youth Beltman Center. So I'm very excited to be, to be a part of that as well. Obviously, this beautiful community center, I've had a chance to enjoy, and, you know, listening to the music of Poclorico through my wall is, you know, kind of a great evening treat. So, like I said, I'm very grateful to be here, so thank you, Sean, I met quite a few of the staff members today, so it's just, it's a pleasure, and I look forward to serving you the best that I can, and obviously, the residents of Longdale, so thank you for having me.
Welcome, welcome aboard. Okay, does that include your report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, one other thing, I just want to, I'll mention this. There have been some areas in the city where the residents have called in about some of the lifting of the asphalt. We, we've been, you know, Public Works has scheduled the rehabilitation of these areas. The work will commence on May twenty-eighth with our contractor, we have to sub fund, unfortunately, takes a little time, to set the, set everything up, the equipment, and get them out there. They're gonna first address this area along one fifty-six, between, on top of Ravela and one fifty-six. On the north side, there's a big twelve-foot-long area that's called, well, I think, the Vod's not here today, but it's called Pumping. It's where the, the water has seeped in and got in the clay and created holes. There's another area along the area, just south of City Hall, that it's similar situation that's happened, and on Ravela, right, just south of City Hall as well. These areas, there's other areas, about eight to, six to eight areas, we're gonna address those immediately. The contractors, the director, will move on those right away, and that is along with the street improvements. But if anyone have any questions, please contact Public Works or my office, and we'll be happy to answer as best as we can. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the report. Let's see from Councilwoman Gray.
I don't have much, I just attended the Neighborhood Watch meeting. Would like to thank Mike Gray, Mike Gray is for putting this together, and I think it was a good turnout. But hopefully, our next meeting will have double the amount of residents that will attend. Can't wait to, to have a next meeting. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Hoffman, please.
I too attended the Neighborhood Watch first meeting, and I'm very encouraged, not just by the number of residents that we came, that, that came out to speak to us, but also the situations in their community that they brought up. I look forward to it growing, I look forward to that more residents get involved, like Mr. Snyder, that he also participates in something like this. Because I think that this is helpful, not just to our neighbors, but also to our Sheriff's Department on what, what kind of issues that we're having in our neighborhoods. Also, this weekend, I attended the annual California Contract Cities Association seminars, and the new installation of officers. A great weekend, lots of learning opportunity, and things that are going on with the cities around us. And that's it.
Okay, Councilman Kirk.
I also attended Neighborhood Watch meeting as well, we see, Mike had some great snacks there. Then, I attended the LA County West Vector Control District meeting. I think our city manager got information about the West Nile virus, it's back, not Longdale, but it's back in Southern California. I attended Senator Bradford's Housing Equality Summit at Cal State Damascus Hills, it was well received. I took the Lottery Trust Oversight Committee meeting. We've finally taken some of these cases to court, justice should be happy about that. And then, I also attended the Maker Fair in Hawthorne High School, that's where I met the young man from West Basin, I haven't about the fire hivers, about the water. And I think that's it.
That's it? Mayor, same story.
I also attended the Neighborhood Watch meeting, thank you to those that came out, and thank you to staff for coordinating that. I also attended Contract Cities Conference this past weekend, and which, I'm gonna bring an item forward. If staff could do more work, I got this between conversations. Measure H is set to expire in 2027, and it was a quarter cent, I believe, sales tax. I want to try and see, and there's another measure that's supposed to go on the ballot. However, I would love to explore if we could supersede that one, because I don't believe we've been seeing Measure H come to our city directly. So if we're able to grab that before it goes to the county, and keep it, and use it for city, possibly for, replace it with our own, to, to look at homelessness, and how we can address it within the city. So I want to see if we can steal that before the county does, to bring to our city. And then, the other thing is just to make sure that the LTN comes back for the judges, we can discuss the subcommittee. And with that, pass along.
Thank you. I too attended the, the first Neighborhood Watch meeting. Was put on, I think, a great job putting on, I can't see you there, put on a great job, putting that on, along with the sheriff staff. And our captain was available as well. I just want to encourage folks to get involved with Neighborhood Watch. It helps us all to keep an eye out on our neighbors. And they said the slogan, if you see something, say something. And it really applies to Neighborhood Watch, because we are the first line, your neighbor's the first line of defense. I was out of town for the Contract Cities, and I realized that my neighbors will be the first, first line of defense in terms of reporting any suspicious activities or what have you. Because, you know, you get to know your neighbors, and you know their comings and their goings, and what have you. So we really rely on one of our neighbors, and that's why this Neighborhood Watch program is very important to the city, and I'm looking forward to it growing. Also attended the Contract Cities seminar, California Contract City Seminar this weekend. A lot of good seminars and trainings. One in particular was put on by the city of Norwalk. The city of Norwalk is fit to get the acunels, but it's, it's tabbed, but basically, it's their, their youth program. They, they have a robust youth development program, pretty much in line with my vision for the Longdale Youth Development Center. The programs that they have, conduct, that they're conducting out of that program, which has been in existence for a while, is A one. I'm looking to maybe bring the, the Youth Advisor Committee to the city of Norwalk, so they can see firsthand how they're running their program, their new programs. In particular, also, how the youth can be instrumental in designing, having to design, if you will, the programming at a youth development center, like the one we built here at Longdale. So if we can schedule that with the Youth Advisor Committee, I think this would be one, well, opportunity for them to get outside of Longdale and see what's going on in other cities, they probably can come up with a lot of great ideals as our youth advisors. So that was one of the best, you know, seminars or workshops, I would say, that they had at Contract Cities. Let's see, what else? Oh, I attended, I don't know if I attended, was it last, maybe, I just mean before. losing her, and losing her, have they had the Take Part Festival? I don't think I reported that last time, maybe that was in between. So, the Take Part Festival they have every year, with a lot of artists and dancing, these are like visual artists, as well as performance artists who work throughout the district, as well as the city of, the school district in Hawthorne. So these children came from throughout. So these children, um, came from throughout, throughout the region, and there was some from down the beach as well. Um, they had the opportunity to basically show their talent. And, man, they have some very talented kids and artists, especially, um, you talk about ceramics, you know, um, and, um, drawing, painting, and things of that nature. So it wasn't just performance art. And so they put on a very good program on that Saturday. With that, I do have one announcement, those who aren't aware. I'm going to be, uh, hosting my second annual pancake breakfast with local firefighters, local ten fourteen, at the fire station here in Longdale, right off one hundred forty-seven, um, um, street. Stop by if you're not doing anything from nine AM to twelve. Bring your kids with you. They're going to get demonstrations from the, the fire department. It just happens to be fire service day a week, um, as, as well. And so we're looking forward to the children coming out and, uh, spending some time with our local fire departments and those professionals there. So that's this Saturday, May twenty-fifth, Memorial Day weekend, nine AM. And of course, we look forward to Memorial Day ceremony. The Memorial Day ceremony is Monday, Memorial Day, and that starts at, is it nine o'clock? Nine thirty. Nine o'clock, right in front of, uh, um, City Hall. Um, and with that, that's all I have. All right, that's all I have, but we're not finished yet, because we've got about ten closed sessions. Actually, we have three closed sessions, uh, tonight.
We snuck, snuck one in, Mr. Mayor. There are two items of anticipated litigation, Government Code five four nine five six point nine D four, and two items of existing litigation, Government Code five four nine five six point nine D one, and the captions for those are in the agenda for anyone who wants to read them.
All right, so, um, well, you just read, provision will be on at this time. At this time, we will go into closed session. Okay, action? Okay. And, yeah, we turned the closed session, and I asked the city attorney to give the report of the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council has briefed on all four actions, or all four items tonight. No reportable action was taken on any item. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. That's for you.
Yeah, that was my question.
The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Longdale City Council will be held at six thirty PM on Monday. Okay, Monday, June third, twenty twenty-four, in the Earl Hoffman Community Center, second floor, meeting room, in Longdale, California. It is now eight fifty-six. This meeting is adjourned.
Sean? Sean? Can I have, can I have the key back?